This meeting will now come to order. Mrs. Senatorie Calrover. Mr. Gambiani?
Here.
Mr. Matheson?
Here.
Mr. Paulson?
Here.
Mrs. Swanson?
Here.
Mr. Roman?
Here.
Mrs. Hackel is not here yet. Mrs. Inteher?
Here.
Mr. Matheson, will you do this in the pledge, please?
I'm going to have a chance to... Pledge of Allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our first item on the agenda is public comments. And we do have one person signed up tonight. Now, the...I will let you go now, but just so you know, the budget is really not on the agenda tonight. But you signed up to speak for an agenda topic, so if you'd like to speak now, you may, or if you would like to wait till after, you may do that, too.
Well, it's kind of listed on the budget, so...
Well, it's listed as a topic for a future meeting, so it really is not on the agenda. But if you would like to go now, you're more than welcome. I'm sorry for the misunderstanding. The opportunity is to speak to the board is provided now. And the board appreciates hearing from stakeholders and values your thoughts and your questions. The board strives to make the best decisions for the district. And public input in a variety of venues is very helpful. Nevertheless, the board must protect the civility and decorum of this meeting. Please be respectful for the duties of the board and the democratic process in your comments tonight. Please use the microphone, state your name and address, and address your comments to the board. Please limit your comments to three minutes. And be factual and courteous, and do not include statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to members of the board or staff. If you feel your manner needs to be discussed in more detail, please attend the board's chance to chat or present your comments to us, right? Mrs. Tom.
Yes, good evening. My name is Mary Ann Batone. It was a little disconcerting to see the public comment at the last meeting. Several employees of the district were asking about their loss of health benefits. And they're surprised, as well as it looks like some of the board members, that they were no longer receiving them. Mr. Farley later mentioned the budget discussion, that portion of the meeting that the district needed to make some cuts. So the district decided to cut the janitor's benefits with the intent, I assume, that they could go on the exchange in the fall, part of the Affordable Care Act. What is a little bit troublesome to me is not that cuts had to be made, because every business and household has been doing this for years and tightening our belts and doing more with less. But that individuals in this district who made the decision to cut benefits from the few are still taking benefits for themselves. I recently put in a FOIA regarding other benefits on the compensation report. And it turns out the taxpayers paying about $18,000 a year for a teacher or employee that elects family coverage, with the employee paying about $5,000. So they're paying about 20%. Principals, from what I understand, are paying about 10%, which would amount to $2,500. And administrators are paying zero. I have in my hand here the 2012 Employee Compensation Report. And in the other benefits for administrator or other administrator column only, the taxpayer is paying $1,849,128. Now, if every administrator paid at least 20% toward their health benefits, and every administrator and employee that isn't paid their 9.4% toward their own pension, and we eliminate a banking of vacation days, which I found out on my FOIA, we paid out $19,319.04 to an employee that accumulated vacation day buyouts who left the district. We could save a minimum of a half a million dollars a year, which would certainly cover all employees' benefits and would even allow money for B-sports. So close to $2 million in benefits is a lot of money for taxpayers to be paying. This is part of the reason why we are struggling financially as a district and will continue to. And it's one of the reasons why Illinois is broke. Government spending other people's hard-earned money and putting it in someone else's pocket. You know, taking something away from one person and keeping something for yourself is not how I approve of my money being spent. And I think many District 200 taxpayers would agree. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Batone.
All right, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mrs. Inteher. Good evening, board members and community. A few items this evening in the superintendent's report. Just wanted to follow up on one item first in regard to the last meeting, where we approved in our governmental agreement with the Park District. If you remember that evening, the Park District had a meeting at exactly the same time we did. And they approved that agreement as well. So we are moving forward with that. It's on the Park District's timeline, you know, where they were looking to hopefully be able to make some improvements on the property behind Monroe Middle School. I do believe that they won't be doing anything this fall. I do believe any type of work won't begin until maybe into the springtime or even next summer. Certainly, that will be at the discretion of the Park District. And we will be working collaboratively with them on that. And we'll certainly keep the board updated. So just wanted to follow up on that and look forward to that. It'll be a great opportunity now for our kids and staff at the building, but also for the community in general, the Park District, to be able to continue to use that facility even better than we ever have by putting down those synthetic surfaces there behind the building. The other item this evening I want to spend some time on for just a few minutes is the start of school. Here in August, I can tell you that the staff that not only here at the district office, but also across the district are working hard to prepare for opening of school next Wednesday. It's always a great day when nearly 14,000 students go back to our 20 schools. And it's an exciting time, a busy time. A lot of preparation goes into that. I had the opportunity two days ago to welcome the new teachers to our district. This year, we have approximately 75, maybe a few more by the time the doors open next Wednesday. We actually had a little bit of attrition going on even this week. So we will be hiring a few additional people prior to school starting. The majority of those were retirements. The rest was attrition. So...but it's always wonderful to step in front of all of our new employees, teachers, and welcome to the district and begin that journey in becoming a District 200 staff member. Thank you to Mrs. Inteher for being there and welcome them on behalf of the board. And it was a wonderful two days. I know Dr. Rammer kept them busy. Lots of information overload on those two days. Full agendas with lots of different staff sharing information. On the student side of things, we are finalizing our enrollment situation. As the board well knows, the elementary is always where we have to pay close attention this time of year, a week before school starts, looking at our elementary enrollment. When we have the walk-in and sign-up and enrollment at schools, once we open back up, we always have people coming in that we do not expect. So we're watching that carefully. A few hotspots that you may hear about, that we're watching, that we know we may have to open sections prior to school starting. At Lincoln, we have a tight kindergarten and second grade there. We are right up to our maximum limits there. If we have any more students walk in, we may have to add staff prior to school starting. Pleasant Hill has a fourth-grade section that is at capacity. So again, one that we're watching very carefully. And also Whittier has fourth and fifth-grade sections that are hotspots for us that we will keep our eye on over the next few days. So those enrollments, as you know from past experiences, are always tight. And we've got space at every school, so it's just a matter of how many kids show up and we have the appropriate staffing levels there. We'll watch it carefully over the next few days. One last thing about opening school, which I know the board members are aware of and have been invited to, is the opening day for staff, which is next Tuesday. I want to draw board members' attentions to a document that you have in your green folders called "The Key to Success." You'll see this again next Tuesday for those of you that are able to make it. I know everybody may not be able to due to their commitments. This summer, senior staff and I, and specifically Faith and Eric and I, worked to come up with a diagram to put all of our district initiatives into one picture. And this is where we landed with this key. We rolled this out last week to our administrative staff when we had our leadership meetings and felt like it was a very good representation of all of what it means to prepare kids to be college and career-ready. The board knows that's been the strategic focus over the last couple of years. And you can see there in this picture, down at the left end of the key, where the ring part is, you can see the inspiring excellence in the middle. That's the district tagline. And then those four key items that are given, that have to happen to inspire that excellence. We have to live within our means. Staff development is critical. We always have to constantly improve with all staff across the district. Integrated technology, making sure that we're constantly looking at ways to integrate better, efficient ways, not only for instructional purposes, but also operationally as well. And then communication and relationships. We're an organization about people. It is critical. That has to be a key piece there. And I know Mrs. Cagoed is not here right now, talks about that all the time. I was going to mention that, and she's not here, so I'll have to tell her later. That relationship piece is very, very important in an organization of people. You see the main staff of the key, the high-quality staff. Again, a critical component. The key doesn't exist without that main staff. And, you know, we are an organization of individuals. As with our budget, 75% of our budget is on, you know, staff salaries and benefits. And it's a key aspect of what we do. That's where student learning takes place, and the people we have in the organization are critical. And finally, the key to unlock the career and college readiness, as you can see down there on the bottom, the PLCs being the focal point to deliver the high standards, the effective instruction, social-emotional learning, as well as a safe and secure environment. And one thing I shared with staff last week, and I mentioned it with our new teachers and next week, next Tuesday, with all staff, is with this picture, if you imagine this key as a brass key, and every once in a while it gets a little tarnished in spots, or you have to polish it up, and you have to make sure you continue to make decisions and refocus in certain areas to make sure that the organization continues on that road and that key to success. So hopefully, you can...you'll be seeing this a lot. I've asked staff and the principals to use this picture when they lead large-scale meetings with staff and the community. And I do believe that they will be using it with parents on back-to-school nights and different things like that. So hopefully, we'll see that soon. Trying to get all of our initiatives into one, you know, picture was real important as we worked this summer. So you will be seeing this from time to time, even in staff presentations to the board. And next Tuesday, you will get a little better, a more elaborate version of where this is headed for those who are able to make it to the opening day. One other item that I need to update the board and the community on, and I did send the board copies of the letters on Monday in regard to AYP and choice. Late last Friday evening, the state posted on their website the annual yearly progress results. However, I didn't get the official notice from the state superintendent until Monday morning, which is when we generated the letters. We were anxiously preparing, but, you know, we weren't, you know, caught off guard. But there was a lot of unknowns with this year, whether it was going to happen, what was going to happen, what was going to be cut. I mean, there was a lot of uncertainty to where some of our schools would fall in regard to AYP. So I'm going to turn over to Faith's office now. And she is going to walk through some of the details on what is happening between now and when school starts next week in regard to school choice for a few of our elementary students. Faith?
Thanks, Dr. Harris. As Dr. Harris mentioned, on Monday, we mailed home letters to all the parents at Washington Elementary, Johnson Elementary, and Hawthorne. And I've spent the majority of the day fielding phone calls and questions, also giving an evening presentation. But a lot of this is somewhat difficult to understand and gets very burdensome with legalities and acronyms and all kinds of things. And the letter that we sent home to parents has very specific language that we're mandated to use. So it's a little hard to put it in plain English, so I do a lot of follow-up phone calls. To kind of give you an idea of what it's like as a parent to go through some of this information, I gave you a one-pager here that doesn't have the yes or no's on it. So if you would like to kind of play along and go down the list of schools there and just put a yes or no of whether you think they made reading AYP or not by looking at these scores. And then as I go through and talk a little bit more about what some of the rules are, you may change your answers. So anyway, it applies only to Title I schools. So yes, there are other schools in our district that do not make adequate yearly progress. But the No Child Left Behind legislation is only affects those schools that get Title I monies. So that is why some of our middle schools and high schools that are also not making adequate yearly progress, we do not offer choice from those schools because those schools do not receive Title I money. The adequate yearly progress, those schools that have to offer choice, are those schools that have failed to make AYP in two consecutive years. I do want you to know that Illinois has filed a waiver now two years in a row to not be under the No Child Left Behind legislation. And last year, it did fail. This year, in Illinois, we're still waiting to hear. It has not had an official ruling. But our state superintendent did issue the adequate yearly progress reports and said, "Go ahead and let your districts and your staff know about this." Some of the complaints from parents that I've been feeling that are very justifiable is how come we're just finding out now? And we went as quickly as we could to notify parents. There are some districts that I talked to that made the decision, "We're not going to rush this, and we're going to notify parents after school starts." We did not want to do that. We don't feel that that is really going in the spirit of offering choice. So yes, it is a very quick turnaround. But we actually mailed the letters home before we had the official wording from the state superintendent. All right, so we go ask a lot, "Well, where does the funding for transportation come from?" And what happens is we have to use our Title I money that we would usually use for reading teachers and reading materials and those kinds of things. We have to set aside money and use that for transportation costs. So that's where, as people opt for choice and we approve that, that is where the money comes from, from Title I. So let's get into making AYP. You have the sheet there, and you can go through and guess. But I'm going to begin to talk about what it takes to make adequate yearly progress or AYP. You need to have at least 95% of your students tested. And that's in each of the subgroups as well as whole. Not an issue at any of our schools. This year, the target is 92.5% that you need to have. Last year, there was the opportunity at 92.5%. If you remember back to then, the state set it back to 85% and gave schools a little bit of leeway. This year, it is back up at 92.5. This spring, when we take this, unless No Child Left Behind has been reauthorized, it will be at 100%. That if you do not have 100% of your students passing, you will be a failing school. The initial results of that 92.5%, it hasn't been stated yet, but it's going to be close to being 99% of the schools in the state of Illinois will not make the 92.5% cutoff for their overall areas and their subgroups. Also, you need to have so many percent of your students graduating. And you also have to go through and have good attendance. That's not an issue at any of our schools. Let me talk about Safe Harbor. And Safe Harbor has more of an impact this year than it has in any of the previous 12 years of No Child Left Behind. And if you scour the state website for what this looks like right now, it's not listed. So it's very difficult to have a good place for parents to go to to understand how Safe Harbor was interpreted this year. What they did, and I need to talk a little bit and remind you of the change in the ISAT cut scores. If you recall my presentation earlier in last school year, the state raised the bar for what proficiency is. Sort of similar to if the grading scale used to be 90% to get an A, now it's at 95% to get an A. So it's not showing that our students know any less, but the bar was raised. So at the same time, we went from 85% to 92.5%, the test grading scale became much more rigorous. They also changed a lot of questions on the test to be aligned to Common Core. So the states are, "What are we going to do for Safe Harbor?" Because Safe Harbor in the past has looked at those subgroups or categories where you didn't make the cutoff the previous year, and then looked to see if there was enough of a gain to be considered significant toward making progress. That would be very difficult to do since the cut scores changed and everybody was going down 15 percentage points about. So what the state decided to do is look at all of the student scores from the year not 2013, but 2012, and apply the new cut scores to those, and then set what the Safe Harbor target would be. And then apply the student scores from 2013 to see if Safe Harbor actually had been made. Try explaining all of that in a letter to the parents. It's a difficult thing to try to go through on the phone. But anyway, this is what, how it actually turns out for our schools. Now, the only schools listed here are our Title I schools, with the exception of Lincoln. Lincoln was a Title I school last year, but their population has changed enough that Lincoln isn't a Title I school for this school year that's just about to begin. So those are the Title I elementary schools listed there in order. And this is actually how it plays out for adequate yearly progress. At Johnson, 51.8%, that's the all category. That's pretty far from 92.5. However, the safe target, the Safe Harbor target, was actually at 54.4. And then you're going to say, "Well, Faith, that's not making it." Then I need to explain the confidence interval that the state also applies to that. The confidence interval says that if there's a 2% change in the overall categories of students meeting or not meeting that, then you can still say that you have met it. So even though they didn't make the Safe Harbor target, which is what parents are referencing, they did make it because of the confidence rule there. I'm not making this stuff up, honestly. All right, then you go across. They made it for white. But for Hispanic percentage in that subgroup, they did not. You need to know that the Safe Harbor target was 48.3%, and that is a difference of three students for that school. And that is the only subcategory in reading or math that Johnson did not make. So that is the area that caused them to be a, quote-unquote, "failing" school and not making adequate yearly progress. We continue to see great gains in some of their areas. They are the school that is most impacted by the cut scores and the changes in that. Several students that are right at the verge of meats or hanging in there are now below. And that has a lot to do with the students that are at that school that have limited English proficiency. Then if you look at Bauer, Bauer makes it in those three areas. I often get the question, "Well, why aren't Bauer's Hispanic students listed or Bauer's limited English proficiency?" And the state only counts it as a subgroup if there are 45 students in that subgroup. So it's not that we do not have any Hispanic students at Bauer or limited English proficiency, but they do not have 45 students in that subgroup. Then you see the scores there for Hawthorne. The low-income and the economically disadvantaged is the subgroup that did not make it there. The scores for Sandberg, but Sandberg did make adequate yearly progress last year, so they do not have to offer choice. That's why they are not on the list. And then in Washington, it was the same thing with the economically disadvantaged. And then you see the Pleasant Hill. Notice that Lincoln, that has the highest overall scores at all and close to it for white, did not make it because they didn't make the Safe Harbor target. It's kind of confusing. All right, then if we look at math, these are how the scores play out. Johnson makes adequate yearly progress in all categories and subcategories, as does Bauer. Hawthorne does not. They missed Safe Harbor by just a few students in the overall category. See how Sandberg plays out. Washington makes it in all of their areas, as does Pleasant Hill. Again, Lincoln does not. So what we then look to is we have three schools we have to offer choice from. Which schools do we offer choice to? The recommendation is to keep within Title I schools when you can because those are the schools that are receiving the money from No Child Left Behind. Johnson, we have offered choice from. Johnson took Bauer before, so we already had buses going there. They are also a Title I school, so that's the choice. It's also the closest to Johnson. And then Hawthorne and Washington will be offered the choice of Pleasant Hill. Parent notification. The letters all went home Monday. Also, we made an auto-phone call to everyone because we wanted them to know why the rush. And I wanted them to know as much as possible that I'm giving an evening presentation tomorrow night to explain all of this in person. And then they need to give me the forms by Friday. And I know that sounds really, really like a fast turnaround. But I have to compile all this information, figure out the priorities, get the bus transportation set up, get the classes notified. So I needed to have this by Friday so that I can spend the weekend calling everyone, telling them whether they made a choice request or not. All right, then the final thing that I spend quite a bit of time explaining is not everybody has the same priority as they request choice. And this is the order. No Child Left Behind and all the ramifications of this are really to help students from low-income families. That is the priority of this money from Title I. So the first priority are those students that are on free lunch and are below level in reading and math. Then it goes to below reading and in math on reduced lunch. Then you can kind of go through all of the different rungs of the priorities. So what we will then do, once I have all this, I categorize all the students that request choice by these nine categories, see what classrooms we have rooms and space in, and then we will make all of those decisions and notify everyone. Questions?
I'll make one comment before I, you know, any board members have questions. Faith did an excellent job here in about 10 minutes explaining the mess that the No Child Left Behind and the state situation plays out. We're not the only district doing this. There's many of our neighbors are doing the same thing. The whole punish situation that's set up, you know, through that legislation is completely inappropriate. It just, it really creates a lot of anxiety for families, for friends, for staff. And we believe that all of our schools are doing an excellent job on a daily basis. We have the same curriculum. We have the same materials. We provide the resources and the needs based on the individuals at that school, and we will continue to do that. So I just wanted to share that. I know many of the board members already know that. But also for the community to understand that we are following the law in this situation, and we will comply, you know, under the federal and stable law.
I have a question. The...I'm not working out. Just again, being new here, I just want to understand this. What this means, the parents have a choice of their students attending another school. That's the end product of this. What, how many students do we expect will switch based on either historic or anticipated or whatever? And then based on that, what kind of cost of transportation are we talking about? And then thirdly, you know, do we expect this to improve in the future, particularly in light of the Common Core testing? So that's my one question.
Three parts.
All right, I think I got the three parts. And the first one was how many students do we anticipate requesting the choice? Johnson is its third year of choice, so I do not think there will be as many students there because I've been giving this presentation and explaining this to parents. This is on the third year in a row. The questions that I got today from Johnson parents were primarily kindergarten parents or parents of move-in that are brand-new, that don't have an established relationship about what's going on with Johnson. And this letter certainly is a little bit more disconcerting if you don't already know a lot about the school. I don't anticipate having, I could ballpark it and say, will be less than 10 that probably will actually move from Johnson to Bauer. The first year, I think we were up close to 20. Last year, 13, 15. I look up the exact numbers. But not, it's not a huge amount of students that moved. And primarily, the students that look at this and their parents request it are not students that are behind in reading or math. Predominantly, those parents that request this are those students that are excelling in reading or math and are worried about the scores. And those aren't the students that have the first priority to go. This is the second year for Hawthorne as well. Ironically, I have not talked to a single Hawthorne parent today. I'm hoping they got one. No, I know they did. But the most questions that I'm getting are from Washington because it's the first time that that school has received that notification. And just like when I've gone through... And just like when I've gone through this with other schools, after I explain all of this, then a lot of people say, well, I didn't understand, it was just a subgroup, I'm okay with that. I can't really ballpark for that school, but certainly of the ones that I've already received, there's much higher percentage for Washington, as expected, because it's the first time that those parents have heard that. You asked about the cost. I think that we're currently spending $18,000 for choice transportation from the previous schools, and that continues because those students that are already elected choice the first year and the second year, unless they've gone on to middle school, we're still transporting those students. And sometimes that comes in the form of a cab, because we're not going to run an entire bus to go and do that. So I would probably add at least another $5,000 or $6,000 to that. However, since we've added and we're going to the same schools from the same area, a lot of students, like if we only had 10 students, we could have put a lot more students on a particular bus, but it depends on the routes. And then, your last question was what we're going to do on improvement, do we see that with improving with Common Core? Yes, I do see that it's improving, and with our students with Johnson, not this year because everybody's scores went down, but the year before with the efforts that we had done in differentiating instruction, especially in reading, Johnson Elementary's scores at fourth grade went up 23 percentage points. I had phone calls from other districts calling me and saying, what are you doing? Because I was really an exemplary game with that. I liked to see our math data. I called around to a few other districts, and they did not have the success in meeting the safe harbor in math, and I think that's partially due to the work that we had already done on Common Core, increasing vocabulary and especially looking at fractions at the upper grades. So I do see that we'll continue with the implementation this year to be even more prepared for the changes in the test. What we're going to need to really look at is making sure that we continue to move kids to the high ends of meets and to the exceeds, because just hovering at what was meets isn't good enough. But thanks to Julio and also to Dr. Harris, our district had already been looking at higher CUB scores than what the state had been doing. So we were able to predict within one percentage point most of the time how we were going to do on the new state test scores. So yes, we're going to continue to improve, yes, we have lots of work to do, but the good thing is I think a lot of those plans are already in place.
One additional thing, just for the board's information, is do we anticipate the 100% in every school next year? The state continues to pursue that waiver from the federal government, and so therefore, we hope a year from now that this, the current rules and guidelines will not be in place, and we will have different expectations. They're certainly trying to target and consider growth. You know, nobody has a problem being accountable as long as you can show growth and be able to measure it, and that makes sense. And all of our schools work on that on an annual basis, and that's really been a lot of our focus, as Faith referenced, Johnson in particular. But that's not the only school, all of the, many of the others have done the same thing. Any other questions?
Faith, where are you making the presentation tomorrow night, what time? And secondly, I know some states have been granted the waiver, where did our program fail, so we didn't make the waiver? No Child Left Behind is an aberration, I mean, the idea that 100% of the children in all categories need to pass next year, both math and in reading is ridiculous, so just want to get some understanding of, is there anything we can do to push the state superintendent along or whoever pays the same money?
Well, the first question is, I'm doing a one-stop presentation. The plan originally, when we would have more lead time, I was going to go to each school, but time just prohibits that. So I am going to Washington because that is the school that hasn't heard the presentation before, that is at 7:00 tomorrow. But all three principals from the affected schools of choice are going to be there. We're also going to have Carrie Heaton there to translate things into Spanish because this does affect a lot of parents who are not yet comfortable in English and would prefer to hear the information in Spanish. Then you ask, well, why about Illinois? There are several things that in order to go away from No Child Left Behind and get to Race to the Top, the new wave of doing things, that the states were told that they needed to do. One of them was to do a survey to staff and to parents and to students at the upper levels so that could all be reported out. Remember, five essentials, a lot of that came about because Race to the Top said that you needed to do that. We also needed to revamp how we are doing teacher evaluations to include student performance data in evaluations. In order to meet the requirements, you would need to have started already to do that. There was a lot of pushback from the teachers unions in Illinois, and Illinois is not implementing that fully until 2016. That appears to be the only remaining thing that Illinois needed to do that they haven't done yet. And we don't have our official word for the waiver, but you know, for all ramifications, we're having to follow it again for this school year. So that, the only thing that was keeping Illinois that I'm aware of from getting the NCLB waiver.
Any other questions from board members? When we do have received that information from the state, I'll certainly pass it along. I do absolutely agree that it, I've actually heard the state superintendent talk about it, is the teacher evaluation component, and the state has not required that at this time. And so their timeline did not meet the federal government's timeline, so the federal government said, okay, then you got to follow the rules from 2001. So basically, that's what's going on. Okay, the only other, last item I have to conclude the superintendent's report is I just want to introduce my colleague, two people to my left here, Diana Hutchison, who is new to the office and not new to District 200, but she is in training tonight and also at the September meeting. The person we had in case Mary Lou is not here, which never happens, left the district, so therefore Diana's being trained on as the board secretary. So thank you, Diana, for being here, and that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Harris, Mrs. Dawkins. Now we get to the consent agenda, and there are several items on the consent agenda. First is acceptance of the gift from the Friends of Wheaton North Public Schools. Second, approval post-text for freshmen and sophomore I- level English. Approval of streaming contract with PlayOn Sports. Approval of truck purchase. Approval of annual certification of serious safety hazard bus groups. Approval of statement of completion for Wheaton North High School and Wheaton Normal South High School field projects. Approval of Health and Dental Insurance Administration, Staff Loss Policies, and FSA Administration. Approval of Life Safety Extension for Jefferson Early Childhood Center. Approval to open previously closed minutes. Approval of bills payable and payroll. Approval of minutes July 17, 2013, open and closed. And approval to destroy recordings of closed sessions prior to March of 2012. Approval of personnel report to include employment, resignation, retirement, and leave of absence of administrative-certified classified and non-renewed staff. Are there any items board members wish to remove from the consent agenda? Then may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Moved by Mr. Roman, seconded by Mrs. Codkill. Is there any discussion?
Just one comment, I want to thank the administration on updating Jefferson Early Childhood Life Safety Amendment, I was one that asked that a couple, two meetings ago. The numbers look much more realistic. If you look at those in terms of project costs, we're spot $2 million of needs at Jefferson that we are obligated to do in the next couple of years, so I appreciate the update. And I also have been dragged by the North High School football field, it was spectacular. Good job, I'm sure it was a much less stressful project than we've had in the past in the summer, so I appreciate all the work.
I'd like to again thank the Wheaton, Friends of Wheaton North Public Schools for their contribution to the gymnasium and so on at Wheaton North High School. I'm really disappointed that we have to get this kind of support and we can't capitalize on the programs that we try to conduct.
Well, I echo that, thank you. I do have a question about the personnel report. I believe I emailed a question to Dr. Harris, and for new board members, used to be on the personnel report that in addition to listing the teacher name and where they were, their assignment, there was also the staff level at which they were being hired and the salary. And after we took on new legal counsel, they advised us that we didn't need to put that on, and so our reports are long anyway, and in an effort, as I understand, to streamline the report, those items went off. And my request was whether or not the rest of the board would be open to including the staff level back into that report. You can correct me if I'm wrong, and Mr. Farley may know this, but I think sometime back in our history, sometimes there were occasions where limitations were put on what staff level could be hired in, then there were other occasions where perhaps there was maybe a bit of over-hiring in terms of, because people want the best, and so they hire the best. And so around this time of year, one of the things I used to try to do was just peruse and see that we were getting a nice mix of new teachers, experienced teachers, just to make sure we were getting a nice mix. And so in my estimation, that's sort of part of the fiduciary responsibility of a board member when they're hiring people. So that would be my request, unless it puts an undue burden on staff or is against the advice of legal counsel, whether or not my fellow board members would support that
There's no undue rest on staff, we can certainly provide it. It certainly, it wishes.
Always open for more information, so I'd like to listen.
There's no objection on the, you know, the state is willing to do it, I think we should go ahead and move with it, I'm seeing a lot of nodding heads, so.
What we'll do is we'll put the step in lane on there, if that's acceptable, because the contract is what it is. You're not really approving that, you're approving that the person be hired at that place. So we'll put the step in lane in there. Okay? A problem, in future personnel, starting in September.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. Any other questions on the consent agenda? All right, then we'll call for the vote, please.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Mrs. Codkill?
Yes.
Mrs. Swanson?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mrs. Inteher?
Yes, motion passes. Sorry for the delay and the voting online. We have one action item, approval of committee appointments. At the last board meeting, we set our goals and we put some committees together to achieve those goals, and I want to thank all of you for giving me your input and being so willing to serve. Would you like me to, I forget, did you, would you like me to mention names or it's in the report? I'm seeing yes in the report, yes, mention names, don't mention. It's all in the report, we have three standing committees, Finance Committee, Facilities Committee, and Learning and Teaching, and then this year we're having, we're going to establish two hot committees, one Community Engagement, and another for Human Resources. So may I have a motion to accept the committee appointments?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Swanson?
Second.
Second, and Mr. Roman? Any other discussion?
Just want to say you did an excellent job, it looks like a really nice partnership of people here, and I look forward to the work on my committee with my two gyms.
I tried to go line up the new people and just giving you one committee so you could get your feet wet and ramp up, and so I thank you all for volunteering because you were all very gracious and willing to give up your time, so.
And the third gym is very comfortable soon as next year.
Okay, can we, if there's no more discussion, let's take a vote.
Mrs. Swanson?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mrs. Codkill?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mrs. Inteher?
Yes, motion passes. Okay, we have several written reports tonight, monthly financial reports, FOIA report, Wellness Policy Report, and the Board Parking Lot Update. Are there any questions from board members on the written reports? Okay, and now we have a report from board members on our ISP resolutions. Mrs. Swanson?
And Mr. Roman, you're free to jump in. So just to get you up to date again, the process here, this is creating some resolutions that we send to our association, which are considered in November by the Delegate Assembly, and the purpose of those resolutions is to guide our lobbying and legislative efforts as an association. And what the process is, is any district can submit a resolution, and then those resolutions that are submitted go to a resolutions committee, which includes one member from every division of our association around the state, so it's 21 members, it's quite a large committee. And that committee looks at the submitted resolutions and makes a recommendation to the Delegate Assembly, either do adopt or do not adopt. That's not the final ruling, the Delegate Assembly still has to vote on it, but certainly having a do adopt recommendation is generally eases the way. So our district submitted this year, as you know, four resolutions, there were 20 in total that we submitted, so we submitted a good portion of those 20. And you have the opportunity to go before that resolutions committee and offer them additional information or answer any questions they may have. And the long and the short of it is, is that, and so I did attend that meeting, and it was on August 2. And the long and short of it is, is that the committee did in fact recommend that do adopt on all of our resolutions, but they recommended that with caveats on each of them in terms of coming back with some wording changes. And I just want to say that basically what they're doing is they're saying do adopt it even though we don't know the final wording yet, and so it's quite a vote of confidence really in terms of their confidence in our district to work with the association staff to come back with wording that's appropriate. So we should feel good about not only the recommendation, but the fact that they had that confidence in us. So I actually asked Mary Lou to include copies of the revised wording, and they are in your green folder if you care to take a look at it. And I would like to just quickly run through it and sort of get a sense of whether the board is okay with the revisions. And the reason I want to note this is that there is a deadline for them to get this material out to the Delegate Assembly. So if we have issues with it, then they might need to withdraw their recommendation of to adopt and, you know, vote a different approach. So just to remind you, we had three resolutions that dealt with charter schools and one that dealt with the pension cost shift. So what I'd like to do is really start with the charter school resolutions because I think those would might, might be the easiest to talk about. And if you look in your folder, it's, if we start with the one that talks about an amended statement, Revised Amendments to Position Statement 2.27, that's probably the easiest one to start with. Basically, our wording was taken as is, but there is another district that also wanted to amend that position statement from a different side of the issue. And so if you look at that position statement, the first phrase in there, similar to House Bill 2060 Amendment Number One in the 98 General Assembly, that comes from the other district wanting that change in there, which was also recommended to adopt by the resolutions committee. And then our wording are those last portions, and that is exactly as we submitted it. So basically, we'd be co-sponsoring this amended wording. And this House Bill 2060, the intent of it there is that currently under charter school law, your, if you have a state authorized charter school, your state funds are taken directly from your funds and give directly from your funds and given to that charter school according to how much they should be funded per pupil. However, if the state, as we know, doesn't always give us our full funding every year, it's sometimes they miss a payment and, you know. So, the intent of this 2060 is that the amount that you give to the charter school would be prorated down by the amount that you received from the state. Seems reasonable and so that's the intent of that and then ours. So, assuming everybody is okay with that, head nods would be great. I know I'm kind of throwing this at you quickly and, Mr. Roman, are you going to vote?
Yeah. I redo this and I was arguing with this person, since it only references really my incorporation pending House Bill.
No, you're right.
Yeah, I'm okay with it only because it, all it does is really incorporate a reference to a pending House Bill that is consistent with our approach to charter school issue.
Then, the second one I want to make you aware of is the revised and condensed virtual charter school resolution as I labeled it there. And we had actually two separate charter school resolutions that were new, would potentially be new position statements to the association, one of which dealt with sort of the regulations surrounding the governance structure of the charter school, the other one surrounding the academic and student impact of the charter school. And so, the resolutions committee said we like those all together as one statement. And we had two bullet points that we had, so they accepted really all of our wording. What you see here is what we had with some slight modifications really to just kind of make it a little, read more smoothly. But we did have two bullet points that they did not include here. One was we had suggested that students be enrolled in a local district for at least one year before they could enroll in a charter school. The association staff advised us that's illegal, we can't, we can't request that because charter schools are public schools and so you can't restrict the enrollment in a public school. And the second bullet point was that charter schools would have to post their scores and academic progress and all that. Well, because they're public schools, they're already subject to that, so it was redundant. So, other than that, all of this is pretty much what we had there. And so, again, just kind of wanting to make sure everybody's okay with moving forward with this wording.
Just a quick question, did any of the other 17 school districts that were requested to host this virtual charter school offer resolutions?
Actually, actually, I'm not sure that any of the ones that were actually offered resolutions, but there were at least two people on the resolutions committee whose districts had been impacted by that, so they were able to kind of vouch and explain to the committee what our concerns were. And I should say that there were, I think, three or four other school districts who also offered up various charter resolutions, not necessarily dealing so much with virtual charter schools in particular, but as they looked at those, a lot of their suggestions really rolled into ours. So, ours kind of became the master proposal to go forward, yeah. And then lastly, unless there's any questions about that, and do people feel good about that? Okay, all right. And then lastly, there was one that we had submitted regarding the potential cost shift on the pension. And the wording that you see here where it says revised cost shift, that is exactly how we started our proposal, our resolution. But we had added a number of points that said if such a cost shift should go forward, here are some things that really, as school boards, we need. And there was a lot of concern by association staff and resolution committee members that when you start talking like that, you're talking almost like these are bargaining pits. And that's not what resolutions are supposed to be. Resolutions are supposed to be sort of guiding, guiding the process. And they were concerned about putting something down that might be misinterpreted as, here's what we're willing to accept, we will take this if you'll do that sort of thing. And that certainly wasn't the intent of our resolution. So, what they all did feel comfortable with though was our opening statement, which basically said, you can't get to a true solution to the pension crisis unless you're funding it according to actuarial standards and a cost shift is not a solution. And so, they're saying leave it at that, we're good with that, we can endorse that. Now, if our group felt that we really, really wanted to not have, not sponsor this, our choice would be to withdraw our resolution and let the association just put forward the resolution on behalf of the board of directors, let's say. So, I don't know what the advantage would be in that to us, but that is something if we just felt like we really liked our old resolution, we just, we don't want anything else to stand in this place. This is the main one, I guess, I kind of wondered how everybody was feeling about.
If I just may add a couple thoughts. When Ms. Mary told, reported back to me about her experience before the resolutions committee, I was surprised that this standard had not already existed as a proposal by the IASB that any pension solution would have to be based upon actuarial, actuarial scientific standards that the community has given. The other aspect of it is that two years ago, I went before the resolutions committee on the consolidation resolution. I described my experience as a new board member going before the resolutions committee as one as a knight appearing before the Star Chamber of King Arthur. And the reason for that was that I, if IASB had taken a position on consolidation, that would not promote consolidation at all. And ours said if two districts wanted to consolidate, the states should facilitate it, they thought that was opening the door to the slippery slope. In essence, the second part of the resolution we adopted in May, they view as opening the door to the slippery slope of accepting cost shift to districts, which in essence, it does open the door. I think it's to our advantage to be the district to promote a resolution, urge the General Assembly to adopt a pension solution that's based on actuarial scientific standards. It's so sensible, so reasonable. And the IASB is going to go ahead with that resolution whether we support, whether we are the endorsing district or not. So, since we put it together and put it on the table, I think we ought to get the benefit of it, of what we've done and be the sponsoring district.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, just on the virtual charter school and so on. I want to understand that, again, the, we're not objecting as a board to, or the association, to the concept of a virtual school because we've, we are considering that at our own level. So, again, to be clear then, that is not an objection here to the concept of virtual school, okay? And then, just to understand what a charter school is again, that's a school that forms within the boundaries of a district and in theory offers the same program and we're just trying to assure that they are, our students of our district are appropriately monitored and educated.
Correct, and held to the same expectations that all public schools are and funded the same way and that type of thing. Now, the only difference is, you said the same types without charter schools, I mean, the charter school legislation has significant latitude. Let me give you an example. We're required to hire certified teachers in the state of Illinois. Charter schools in Illinois necessarily don't have to hire certified teachers with a license in the state of Illinois. That's one difference. There's other things too, but for instance, they want to go out and hire a scientist or an accountant to teach high school math. They can do that. That's an example of something where, so it is, there is a lot of latitude there, that's just an example, there's other things too. They may not have to meet other rules and regulations and requirements like all other public schools do in the state of Illinois.
So, our issue then with the charter school is that they are monitored as we would be, we're not objecting to the concept, we're saying that they have to be held to a standard comparable to us.
And funded, of course, which is another.
Great job, great job, both of you, thank you very much.
So, I can get back to them and say it's all over?
All right, good.
Do we have to do any approval of that or?
Are there any other board reports tonight? Mrs. Swanson? Are there any other board reports? Again, I want to just say thank you again to the Friends of Wheaton North. You really did a great job working with our principal and taking our needs and figuring out a way to help us, you know, fulfill those needs. So, your cooperation is very fabulous and we thank you again.
I have one other comment on the board reports and that is tomorrow night, the Wheaton Rotary and the Chamber of Commerce are having, maybe Erica, you could maybe explain this a little better, right? It's an opportunity for us to attend the event to help, go ahead.
Takes a second, it should be, plumps of lights on, it's ready.
Okay. So, tomorrow night, the Wheaton Rotary spearheaded this event, but in partnership with the Wheaton Chamber of Commerce is hosting a pack the backpacks party. So, our Wheaton Rotary Club purchased 1,700 backpacks for students in our community. We donated 1,200 of those backpacks to humanitarian service project, which does help students in our community. So, the families that they work with, many of which are our families, will be the recipients of those backpacks. But with the Chamber of Commerce, who is, the businesses have collected supplies throughout the community, we are hoping to fill 300 backpacks tomorrow night. So, chamber members, Rotarians will be stuffing backpacks, networking tomorrow night at Arrow heading from 5 to 7. And this is really an opportunity to, for several reasons, to engage local businesses in our mission and to educate people about our students. And one of those things is, is that roughly 25% of the students in our district are free or reduced lunch, I'm sorry, receive a free or reduced lunch. And so, that means our families are living at or below the federal poverty line in our community and that's something that a lot of people aren't aware of. And so, we want to bring light to that, but also make sure that every student starts the school year off right. And Joanne's been talking about social emotional learning and we've talked about how happy kids learn best. And so, if we can make those, all of our kids happy for the first day of school, we're excited to do that. And as a district, work with our local partners and nonprofits and businesses to make that happen, so.
Thank you, Erica. The, this is a great opportunity for our community engagement committee goal to be achieved by participating in this program. So, you know, I'm going to be there and I hope to see some others.
Is this the same event that used to hold every year, every year?
Similar.
Similar, okay.
They change it up, but it's the same.
Same concept, okay, good, thank you. Are there any other reports from board members? Okay, well, topic for future discussion will be the 2013-14 budget. We have one announcement, 2013-14 chance to chat dates. And those are October 8th, 2013, from 8 to 9:30 at Wheaton North South High School, January 25th, 2014, 9 to 10:30 here at the SSC. And April 15th, 2014, from 4 to 5:30 PM at Wheaton North High School. So, any of you who want to come and have more of an unstructured discussion with the board and obviously the two high schools with some of our students, please feel free to come. Our next regular meeting will be September 11th at the Jefferson Early Childhood Center. And we have one person wishing to speak, a non-agenda item, and Mr. Harold Ross. And again, same rules apply as to, same guidelines applies to the opening public comments. And to preserve the confidentiality of the individuals, although the board reserves the right to request that item to the lady, either to personnel or students, be provided to the board privately or in writing for consideration.
Okay, I did some quick research into the GCA contract that was discussed at the last board meeting. I went back looking at the contract from 2009 through 2013 and basically the contract stayed at the exact same amount. And then, then the approval for the 2013 and 14 increased by about $600,000. The original bid that was, GCA was paying for those years was $1 million, or just, just showing $2 million a year. Now, AMD's bid was for the upcoming year was just over $2 million. Now, there were comments being made that AMD could not meet the contractual obligations of janitorial services, however, GCA was able to meet them at a lower cost, which also included, you know, several hundred thousand dollars of medical coverage on top of it. So, something doesn't seem right with the way the bidding went out because the average, the contract increased 32% from last year to this year without, without medical. So, and also I looked at the GCA bidding information, it looks like the custodians get paid less than $15 an hour and they haven't gotten a pay raise. They said in more than four years, I don't know if there was a pay raise in this last contract, nobody mentioned there was or not, even though the contract decreased by 31.7%. And I'm just curious to know why AMD could not match the price that GCA said it couldn't match this year and they were paying it the prior years. Thank you.
Then we have one follow-up clarification. First of all, the GCA contract, the cleaning contract this morning was bid, we received all the bids, companies either meet the specs or they don't. And that, then the decisions made, which was the recommendation and followed and board approved. The second thing is when we hire a vendor for any of our services, whether it's transportation, custodial, food service, or any other, they, it's their employees, those are not District 200 employees. They are employed by GCA, they are employed by Illinois Central, and they are employed by Airmark. They are not District 200 employees. They negotiate collective bargaining agreements with the vendor. Now, we do have some influence, we do spec our things. Mr. Farah and I have met with the GCA representative since the last meeting. One of the reasons we don't see them here this evening is because we are having conversations with them about the contract and all the situations around that. And certainly the two systems comments of Mr. Farah and I would be happy to follow up with you if you have any further questions.
Thank you, Dr. Harrison. All right, we have no need for closed session tonight, so I'll entertain a motion to a side.
Oh, okay, I saw it.
Is there anything you need to ask or? Why am I not on the IASB? Probably because I turned off. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Sorry, the motion is adjourned, I'll figure out the computer.